Call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
Right, first up, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. If everyone had a few minutes to read over that. If there are any changes or additions, make note of that. We had the last council meeting minutes, the joint government meeting from March 31st, library board meeting, April 8th, planning commission, April 8th, telecom commission, March 17th, utility commission, March 27th. And then we had amplification permits, all submitted by the chamber for River Fest Weekend. Two are at the Fat Pheasant, one is at Teagles Park, and they're all banned entertainments. And then the exempt gambling permits. One, two from the Wyndham Chamber, May 30th and June 11th, both for bingo. And one from the Wyndham Women of Today, May 20th, for bingo. And then also the regular bills.
I'll make a motion to accept a consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jason. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any department heads like to speak? John from the liquor store?
John Nelson, liquor store manager. I wanted to update the council. At the end of the month, I'll be attending the MMBA, which is the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association Annual Conference. Up at the conference every year, there is awards given out to different liquor stores. Five different categories, best theme promotion, community involvement, team of the year, in-store experience and design, and best innovation. I did submit us for the in-store experience and design with our whole expansion remodel project. I was told on Saturday that we were informed that we are a winner. So, up at the conference, I'll be receiving a plaque. We will then be able to receive $300. That will be used towards a specific community project. So, I'll be meeting with the liquor commission to kind of decide and see where we should kind of put that. The money is not allowed to go into the city general fund. It has to be designated to a certain project. So, I'll accept that award on Tuesday, the 29th, I believe. And then, we'll bring it back, so.
Just thank you, John, for your hard work. I think, you know, we put a lot of time and effort into looking at that remodel and, you know, what we were going to do with the liquor store. And if people that have been down there since all that took place, it is beautiful. Definitely easy to get around. Definitely more accessible for people. Displays products beautifully, so it's no wonder why the Wyndham store won that award. So, congratulations, have fun up there, and we can't wait for you to bring that plaque back home.
I just want to say again, thank you again for all the hard work you and your staff have done down there. So, you guys have made something that didn't work very well before, made it into something that is accessible and something nice to work with down there, because I hear good things from a lot of people down there though. But thanks again to you and your staff, thank you.
Kari Hanson, library director. We are thrilled and honored to have Patty Wetterling and Joy Baker come to Wyndham next Wednesday, the 23rd, at 1 o'clock. And we're going to be over at the Historical Society. We're working in partnership with them, which was part of the grant that we received to have them here. So, and they'll be speaking on the book, Dear Jacob. So, next Wednesday, 1 o'clock.
Thank you, Kari. Any other department heads? Okay. Up next, we have the proclamation for National Library Week. That's set for April 6 through the 12th. Is there, so we need a motion to accept the resolution.
Call that motion.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry. Motion made by Jim, second by Scott. Jason, will you read the proclamation?
Yes, ma'am. City of Wyndham, Minnesota. 2025 National Library Week Proclamation. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life's journey. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, and social economic status. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing on understanding civic engagement, and sharing community goals. And whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Whereas libraries make choices that are good for the environment and make sense economically, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. Whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital sources, resources for present and future generations. Whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota, that the week of April 6 through the 12th, 2025, is proclaimed National Library Week. All residents that are encouraged to visit their, I'm sorry, all residents are encouraged to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. Ready, set, library. Adopted by the council of this 15th day of April, 2025.
Roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, thank you for reading that, Jason. And the council has adopted the proclamation for National Library Week. Up next is Wyndham Area Health Budget Presentation and Proposed Governing Board By-Law Change. Shelby Medina and John Pearl are here.
Holy cow, I guess I need my glasses. Nice to see you guys tonight. Thanks for having us here for the Wyndham Area Health Budget Presentation. This budget was presented to the governing board last Monday and accepted at their meeting. And we're excited to share it with you tonight as well. If we look at the income statement that is presented on the screen, on the far right, it shows our 2026 budget proposal. Next to that, on the left, is our projected revenue. And, yes, Steve's going to have to just kind of guess, I'll just talk a lot here. It has our projected revenue for this current fiscal year and then the previous two-year actual items. So, that very first line is total patient revenue. That would be considered our billed charges. So, for our 2026 budget, we're budgeting $74 million in billed charges. That is partially a rate increase of 4% and almost 13% increase in growth. We anticipate a lot of growth coming through our surgical department. We've hired two surgeons. We've added, it was actually last July, we've added pain management, got reacquainted with that. We've also hired an orthopedic physician assistant to help with Dr. Bakker, who comes and performs those orthopedic procedures. That's a good business for us for lots of reasons. One is just the community need. There's a lot of, the term is always bread and butter procedures, so we're talking colonoscopies, you know, easy repairs, laceration repairs, those types of things. But the fact is, is when we don't have those services here, the community has to travel out of town. And so, we are very excited to keep those resources close to home. And it helps grow our business, in all honesty. And so, the other thing we talk about is when we talk about surgical procedures, you have lab procedures that come out of there, you have radiology procedures that come out of there. So, we're seeing our ancillary services grow as well. So, ironically, even though that seems like a large number, we're on a 17% growth over last year for the budget year that we're just completing. So, it's a large number, but we've already done it without those providers, so. Deductions from revenue, this is my least favorite topic, because we charge that 72 million, but at the end of the day, we actually receive about 50% of what's charged. So, for example, our Medicare business pays us at about cost. Our medical assistance business, we lose money. And then our commercial business, we make a little bit. So, those all kind of balance out. If you take everything as a whole, we get about 50 cents on every dollar. So, that's where our deductions from revenue track, very similar, about half of our patient revenue. The last item in the revenue section is our other income. That generally consists of our wellness center, membership fees, cafeteria, sales, those types of things. It's pretty consistent year over year. So, our net revenue from operations, our budgeted number is $38,800,000. So then we get down to the expense column, and we have increased expenses to go along with those increased revenues. This year, it's going to look a little bit different, because we are employing more individuals as opposed to having contracted services with them. So, we're seeing more dollars show up in our employee salaries, which in turn increases employees' benefits. So, we're seeing about an 18% increase there. Pharmaceuticals, we expect some growth there. We are increasing our IV therapy activity. One of the programs that falls under that is chemotherapy. And as you can imagine, chemo drugs are very expensive, but we do anticipate an opportunity to provide more chemo services in town. So, in turn, there's going to be more expense for the drugs. We're seeing an increase in joint. We expect an increase in joint procedures. So, the components that make up those total knees, or total hips, or total shoulders, that falls in our supply department. So, we budgeted a 15% increase in that area. Purchased services, actually, it seems like it's a big number, but the increase is actually pretty modest, because as I said, we're employing more providers than we are contracting for those providers. So, really just moving dollars in a different spot. I think the big numbers that we add this year that are very important are depreciation. The new medical building will go online sometime in mid to late May, maybe early June. It's not in stone yet what that date's going to be, but we're going to be bringing on depreciation. So, that's obviously, we're paying for the building. We have essentially the accounting piece to that is over the life of the building and the equipment, you're depreciating a percentage of it. So, you see that substantial increase even over our projected this year in depreciation, as well as capital items that we purchased throughout the year, like new capital items will add to depreciation as well. And then, of course, the interest income. We have $20 million in debt on this project, and so when the project's finished, we'll start paying that back. That's a 20-year loan. So, we're seeing a big increase in interest expense as well. So, overall, we're budgeting an income from operations for the year of $225,000. That's about 0.6%. So, pretty low. We'd love to be in the 3.5% to 4%. That's important to, year over year, to be a going entity where you can reinvest in the capital and grow and expand. But we also know we're taking a lot of expense that's coming online now. So, we expect things to work out in our favor with that 0.6% operating margin. Other items of interest, it's just how it falls on the income statement. We see that non-operating income of $850,000, which is actually pretty consistent with what we're showing this year. The difference is, is almost all of those dollars in non-operating income is from investments, so funds that have been invested. Well, we've since depleted our investments, because we put $10 million into the project, but we're bringing on lease payments. So, when Sanford moves over roughly, again, no date in stone, but sometime in June, when they move over, they'll be making lease payments, so that will show up in our other revenue, because it's not part of our hospital operations. So, overall, you look at that bottom-line number, our net income, we're looking at just over $1 million. $1,075,000, which is 2.8% overall. I think those are the big items I wanted to share on the budget. Did you have any questions from what I shared?
Just, I commend you guys for what you're doing out there, doing a great job, and it really looks nice. It does, you guys are doing a really great job out there. But last year, when we were talking about, when we were building the place and stuff like that, we came to you guys with a ask. Either some kind of revenue coming back to Wyndham as far as leasing the buildings and stuff like that. And we asked if you would come up with the number you felt comfortable with. And I don't see none of that in here. And we asked if that wasn't good enough, if you'd come up with a, like a truck for the fire department or something like that. And we really haven't heard nothing on that kind of end of the ballpark. I mean, where are we at with something like that?
Yeah, we haven't really had more discussions on that. We are absolutely interested in partnering with the city on projects that might come up or when needs arise. There isn't anything currently in the budget beyond the approximately $80,000 that we already have commitments to. So, we, as I recall those discussions six months ago, yes, we did talk about a fire truck and those types of things. But also, I felt like the consensus was, let's get this building online, let's see how things start out. And then, as you get into your next year's budget cycle in the fall, that we'd have more in-depth discussions. And that would be perfectly fine, we'd love to have that.
What about discussions on the old building that you guys are operating now? Let's order you, in fact, the old part of the hospital that's up and running.
What do you mean by that? What are you asking?
I mean, as far as, let's throw them a rent as an entity of one of Wyndham's buildings that you guys are using for us to make all this possible happen for the new building, we asked from the liquor store a certain percent, the electric department, their sewer and water. And I feel if you guys are one of the, part of the Wyndham entities, we should profit a little bit from what's happening now from the new, the old part of the building, because that's up and running, is still making money there.
Okay. I think you're getting some of that through the partnerships we currently have in place. You also have, there will be tax on that new space where Sanford is in. My understanding is that tax will be larger than the tax on the old building. Obviously, it's a more expensive building. So, you should see an increase in funds those ways. You know, just like we've talked about in the past, and I think it warrants more discussion, is when you compare the hospital to the liquor store, I don't think that is an apples-to-apples comparison. We don't operate the same way as the liquor store.
And I understand, I was just using that as an entity of the electric department, the water and sewer. It's one of Wyndham's source of revenue type of thing. And with the building of the old Wyndham Hospital, it's, I'm looking at it as one of the entities of how Wyndham could benefit from having that building as one of our buildings that we run in Wyndham. And Sanford runs for us, type of thing.
Just, I guess, my thoughts. We did have conversations about that and how we could involve the hospital with this. But then, you know, when you kind of think about it, the utilities and different departments that we request money from kind of have a set, this is what they're going to get every year, they know what they're going to charge, they know how that is going to get paid, you know, it's pretty guaranteed. I feel that it's hard to kind of do that with the hospital, because you don't know how their income can change. A pandemic can happen, like, we know that. You know, if a piece of their equipment breaks down, it's a huge expense. It's not, you know, it just, to me, when I really was thinking about this since the last time, you know, six months ago or whatever, that we had this conversation, that really it's hard to, like, put an exact number and say, okay, hospital, pay us X amount of dollars every year, so that we can put it in our general fund and go towards different things. That would be wonderful, but I think it's hard to expect that from the hospital and make sure that they thrive, because if they don't thrive, our city isn't going to thrive. I mean, it's kind of, I compare it to like the school too. If our school doesn't thrive, our city isn't going to thrive. We need all those parts working together to really make our whole community thrive together. So, I think that I've kind of flip-flopped a little bit maybe on that, on saying, I don't know that I expect a certain amount. I think maybe the best way to kind of do it is, year to year, be looking at, working with the hospital together, you know, as they present budgets, as they present how, you know, what they're doing in their plans. And we look at how that aligns with the city and different plans we have, because I would like to see that it, you know, they, we're looking more towards health and safety of our community and like physical activity, you know, like walking paths, like our pickleball court, like possibly a swimming pool. I mean, you know, just different things that promote health, promote wellness of our residents in the community. And so, I kind of see, like, our main utilities and things like that, funds that we get there going towards, you know, specific projects for the city or our general fund, things like that. But also, I think the hospital is more, I would like to see more of the money that comes from them go towards amenity things that we want to have in our community. And, you know, that we lack, we lack having the funds come in to have the amenities that bring people to town. Because if you have a good hospital, if you have a good school, that's, you know, what brings other employers to our community. And if we can bring other businesses, factories, whatever, to our community, because we have a good school, because we have a good hospital, then that brings more people, more workers, and more of a tax base. And so, but we also need some amenities. So, I guess that's where I would like to see it kind of going. Instead of saying, hospital, we want X amount of money from you every year, I would rather say, let's look at it year by year. If you're having a good year, you know, we want to look at what kind of amenities, what kind of things can we bring to our community that you can assist with funding? And if there's other joint things that can come in and fund too, you know, I'm not saying you have to totally fund one project every year or something. But I think it's got to be, we all work together. We're a small community, we work together, and we figure out how to support each other to make it all work. And so, I don't, maybe I'm talking in circles here, but I just like to see that we, that's kind of the direction that we look at, is how are you doing each year? Especially now with the changes going to happen. I think we're going to see changes over the next five years on their growth and what happens. And maybe it's going to be tremendous, that they're going to come to us and say, you know what, put it in a pool, you know, or, you know, maybe to be an indoor pool, I don't know. You know, it just, I think there's a lot of opportunities to work together, and so I guess I'm more on that, not a set amount, but let's work together year by year and address it.
One of the amenities that I want to, I'm thinking about is a stoplight. But anyway, I was going to ask, how is your, you know, did your robotics or your robot surgery, how is that going? Have you had many or done any?
Not as many as we would, sorry, not as many as I would like. We do see the program growing. What's nice about that program is we have a urologist that started working with us last December. We anticipate that we'll have some robotic procedures out of his work, as well as our new surgeons are interested in robotics as well. Prior to that, we had Dr. Hinchar, OBGYN. He is the primary source of the robotics cases. So, absolutely want to see more growth in that area.
That's one employee too that you don't have to pay, just feed electricity to.
Yeah, right.
I'm grateful for what you have been doing out the hospital, you two. When you hear the stories about the small hospitals around the state of Minnesota in the state they're in, and they're failing, and I'm grateful for where we are now and what you're doing out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to just keep the communication open, and, I mean, we had a meeting, and I think that went well. And we just really need to come up with some goals between the us and you, so that we can work on them together and just keep communication open and have more meetings and do some more brainstorming. I mean, going off of what Jenny says, I don't think your point goes unheard or anything, but I think that if we can work together, we can get some of those amenities in that, you know, we've spoke on or that's been talked about in the past. And I would just like to see that happen, and I think you guys are easy to talk to, so I expect that will be in our future.
Very good, thank you all.
And I agree, I agree, you guys are doing a phenomenal job out there, and I appreciate everything you guys do for the city of Wyndham and for the Wyndham Area Health, because you're leaps and bounds ahead of all the other stuff around here. But I just would like to talk, keep the conversation going and open some dialogue if we could, because I don't want to disrespect anybody. And I think, like I said, I think you guys are good at what you're doing, and you both have a job to do, and you guys are doing a great job of it. But I appreciate all you're doing for us here in Wyndham. But we just, like I said, like to keep the communication open. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
I would make a motion to accept the budget as presented.
Second, and I'd like to say I appreciate your very clear communication, John. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Motion by Jenny, second by Jason. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we've got the proposed governing board bylaw change. Shelby?
We are looking at the actual term limits of our board members. Currently, the term limits of our board members is three, or no more than three, three-year consecutive terms, which is a total of nine years. With all the activity that we do have going on in the hospital, as well as just our future strategic planning. With all the activity that we do have going on in the hospital, as well as um just our future strategic planning um, and the long-range uh goals that we need to meet. We're proposing to increase the term limits to five three-year terms for a total of fifteen years. Nine years seems to be um a long time, but nine years, I just celebrated my eighth year, ninth, eight or nine. Eight or nine years, I'm not real sure, this past February, um, and this went by extremely quick. And to have um turnover in the board uh right now would really po- potentially create some slowness in our ability to move forward for, for individuals who really need to um come in and just haven't kept up and need to be caught up. There's a lot of large decisions that the board is making, large decisions that they're taking into consideration. And um in speaking with the board members, they too feel as if the term limits are short compared to what we've got going uh currently and what we anticipate in the future. So our proposal, which has been accepted by the board as well to the bylaws, is to increase term limits from three uh three-year consecutive terms to five three-year consecutive terms.
I'd make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Jason, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks for being here, guys, good presentation, John. Kay, did you have anything?
No, no I did not, I just, I'm here in moral support and thanks for um six million years probably.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the twenty twenty-five street project, the feasibility study and call for public hearing. And we've got John Ketsenberg from, no, are you coming, John? From the street department and Dan from DGR is here, thank you.
Evening, Dan Metzger with DGR Engineering. Um, I've got the feasibility report as included in your, in your packet. Um, I was gonna go through quickly, have a, kind of summarize what uh, what was in the feasibility report. Um, and then leave time for questions and uh see how we want to move forward with the, the public infrastructure dollars the, for the city. Um, started looking at this uh for a project in twenty twenty-three, so a few of the committee members have been part of the street committee that we've looked at this. Um, have probably seen a few different uh cost changes uh over the, over the past couple of years. Um, obviously we were all, as the United States and in the world right now, publicly aware of uh inflation and how that's changed just recently. So those costs have increased, um, those costs are based off of projects that we completed in the last few years, so we're, we track those dollars. Um, it's not a perfect uh system because certain projects have certain tweaks here and there, but uh in general, as an average, um, if you break out all the pieces and then put it back together like that, we, we get pretty good results. Um, the numbers that we're giving you in these reports, we're trying to be on the high side of average. And the reason that is, is so that you can hopefully commit to a number and move forward with the project. Um, once we get done with bidding, the intent is not to have change orders or differences that make it where you can't complete the entire project or you have to cut back certain pieces of the project, so. Um, again, while that's not a perfect science, um, and things have changed, uh, most of the time we, we, we keep that in a pretty uh pretty close proximity within that ten percent or so of those, of those numbers, um, which is part of that, so. Um, go through this, uh, the report uh was ordered in February uh from the council to look at feasibility for the alleys between tenth and eleventh street from third avenue to fifth avenue, as well as between eighth and ninth street, between third avenue and fourth avenue, so approximately three blocks versus alleys. Current bituminous surfacing approximately twenty to thirty foot wide, it kind of varies as it goes in between the buildings and things like that and changes. Uh, there's some significant cracking uh throughout the entire area, there's significant potholes um where the base is, is in poor condition. Um, the surfacing is a lot of the problem with that is because it allows continuous water to enter the base, the base gets saturated. Vehicles, traffic go over it and obviously make it worse. And the more often it does that, the less it's gonna hold up to the next thing that comes through, so basically it's a deteriorating effect long-term. Um, and that's part of why, uh, part of the project is including uh potentially doing storm sewer improvements to try to get that water away from the road itself, the, excuse me, the alleys themselves and the road base. Um, the quicker you are able to get that water away from that, the longer the new product would stand up, so whatever, whatever version of that we have. Um, in that, we looked at three different um alternatives to how to complete that work. Um, there's obviously different construction methods. Um, the first alternative we looked at, which has been the process of the last two street projects, has been a complete bituminous reconstruction, um, which would include redoing the base, including doing the utility, storm sewer utility that we mentioned, to remove that storm water. Um, and then putting four inches of bituminous surfacing over that. Um, the key to four inches of bituminous is in the future, when we're looking at a similar type of process where the pavement isn't doing as well and there needs to be something. If you have four inches, you have the ability in a little better shape to do a mill and overlay. So you can remove a portion of that asphalt that we're putting down at this time at some future point. And then putting new asphalt over, which would seal up that, seal the base up and keep that water out of that base. Um, the problem with what's currently there and anybody that's driven through it can see it, is, is we've broken through that pavement in a significant portion of it, 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 it's very severely cracked and broken. Um, it's very difficult then to try to put something over the top that maintains because you have a reduced condition of the base. Um, and the base is what's actually carrying the load, it's not the asphalt itself. Um, so the next option that we've looked at is a cost opinion, um, excuse me, I, I went past the cost there. Um, the problem with the reconstruction obviously is partially the cost, so between four hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars per linear foot. Um, that total cost for these, these three sections would be uh nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars estimated. The next version of it that we looked at, due to those costs, was to do an asphalt overlay or bituminous overlay. That overlay would consist of an inch and a half of a two minutes pavement over the existing pavement. Um, there would need to be significant milling, uh, due to the fact that the current alley is obviously matching doorways and things like that. Um, we can't just go up an inch and a half and not affect everything else, so there are things that need to happen, that'd have to be milling along certain pieces of parts. And then there would be thickness differences depending on how that worked out to try to get the drainage out. Um, can be done, but again, it's, it's, it's less uniform because paving machines typically have the, the bar in the back, they can crown it in the middle, up or down. So you can do like a street pavement full width uh on, on narrower things, or they crown it all one direction and then pave to the middle, go to the other side, pave to the other side. Well, if there's too many movements in that, the asphalt machine can't actually make most of those adjustments. So you're gonna end up with different uh thicknesses in pavement, um, and it's a little more difficult to get a uniform finished product. The more uniform it is, the better it tends to stand up.
By the time you uh melt, do some milling on those alleys and uh put the storm sewer in, there's not gonna be anything left to overlay.
Correct, so that, that's why we're not recommending, recommending a mill and overlay, correct.
I mean, and you can't go up higher, that's gonna cause drainage problems.
Correct. So that was why that was an option looked at for cost reasons. Um, again, that knocks the cost down three hundred and twenty-one thousand, um, at a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy dollars per foot, but it's not a realistic option. Uh, the third option uh is also a good option, it's a complete reconstruction option, um, but it would be reconstructed with concrete pavement. Uh, the concrete pavement obviously would last a little bit longer, but the costs are again higher. So six inches of concrete pavement over six inches of granular base, um, that cost would be five hundred and sixty-five to six hundred dollars per linear foot or approximately one point two million dollars for the project segments that we're looking at. Um, part of those costs and the life cycle of those items is how long it lasts, so obviously you're putting an investment into these, you want that return to last as long as it possibly can. That bituminous reconstruction, that first number one option, um, the design life on that is twenty to twenty-five years. Um, with good maintenance and crack sealing, you can make that last for well over twenty-five years, um, um, pu- pushing that design life out with that additional maintenance. Um, because of the issues we talked about, the inch and a half overlay option, the option number two um would have a design life of only three to five years, um, because of how poor the existing pavement is. So again, the upfront costs are significantly smaller, however, because of how poor the base is and the existing pavement and how that currently lays in there, uh, we don't anticipate that it, it would give you a very long design life, so again, that's not, it was looked at due to cost, but we want to make sure that we're not jumping on that just because of cost, it's not a very good long-term solution. The concrete uh version uh would give you a thirty to thirty-five year design life. Um, some concrete pavements completed well can last well beyond that thirty-five year design life. But again, as we mentioned, there's, there's an additional cost of that of about twenty-one percent. Timing, another piece of the process is obviously it takes something to construct all this, so there's a time uh delay and, and it affects all the business owners, anybody who utilizes those areas, so that's something to consider. Uh, the bituminous reconstruction would be about a three to six week process. Um, local traffic would be minimal, once the alley pavement was removed. Um, once they put the base in, potentially there could be some local traffic crossings, things like that, but in general, you're pretty much gonna be cut off from that pavement for that three to six weeks. Uh, bituminous overlay option, that is one of the other reasons besides cost that it's nicer, is the one to two weeks um that it would take to put it back would be significantly less impact. However, again, because of the constraints on how to construct it, it would probably not be your best option. The concrete option, because of it takes longer to install, there's more planning and upfront work, it goes together in more pieces, especially because this isn't a street that's long and straight that you can put back in with a paving machine in one chunk. So it's gonna be a lot more staging and pieces put together. Um, also a good option, uh, long-term life, but it's probably gonna be a disadvantage for the local people at a six to eight week clip, um, to put together that concrete uh option. Um, again, I already mentioned it earlier, but the first option for bituminous reconstruction was nine hundred, is estimated at nine hundred and ninety thousand. The bituminous overlay option, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, and the concrete, the third option for concrete reconstruction, one point two million. The city intends to complete um the work utilizing bonds and then special assessments of the adjacent property owners. Um, the cost to the assessed portion uh will range anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-eight percent of the total project. It somewhere lands right around thirty percent in the last few projects, so that's uh what we would anticipate, somewhere in that thirty to thirty-one percent of the project. Half the alley improvement costs would be assessed to those property owners abutting the project. The other half of those costs would um be paid by the city. Um, there, I don't believe there's any city properties adjacent to these segments, but that would be wholly paid for by the city portion.
By the church.
So there is one segment, so the city portion of that linear footage would be paid a hundred percent by the city cost of the project. Uh, feasibility is again, I, I've kind of alluded to this, but the poor condition and of the existing and the poor condition of the existing base, uneven areas, susceptible, uh, susceptible to soft subgrade, um, would break up sooner rather than later. Um, and not allowing the inch and a half overlay to be a sustainable, good use of your tax dollars um going forward. Um, in other situations, that may be appropriate, but in this particular one, I don't believe you're gonna get the most bang for your buck. The complete bituminous pavement reconstruction will allow for the corrective work, allow for the storm sewer and be your most cost-effective option for getting a new paved surface, um, that would last that design life of twenty to twenty-five years. The concrete surface is also an option that would be feasible, but again, it's gonna increase the overall project cost by twenty percent upfront. Um, but it would allow for all the other work that we would intend to do as part of this project. Um, all things considered, um, the more feasible option for the city Wyndham for this project will be the bituminous construction option. Um, again, we base those costs off estimates. The actual cost will be completed as part of a bid process with contractors and an open bid process. You guys will see all of these documents as time goes on here. Um, the assessment process will be based off that as well, so the adjacent property owners will pay based on what the contract costs actually are from the contractor, not based on my estimates. The part about the estimates is that is a cap for those property owners. So as I mentioned, we try to budget those costs at a level that we're hopefully higher than what the intended costs are when, when they come in at bid. If that weren't to be the case, any additional cost would be borne by the city solely and not by the assessed property owners. That cost is capped for those assessments. So that would be based off what our report says in our assessment hearing that we'll have in, in a month if you decide to proceed.
So, so according to my numbers, when you add the storm sewer in, it comes to a one million, two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars for, for the bituminous.
That in, the nine ninety included the storm sewer. That is part of the storm sewer cost.
Not according to the way it's listed here. It's separate, two hundred and fifty-one thousand for the storm sewer, has to be added to the nine hundred and ninety thousand. Comes to one million, two hundred and forty-one thousand.
Okay, excuse me.
That's, that's absolutely crazy for three blocks of alley construction, that, it's beyond my mind. I, I can't support that, I can't support it.
And as I mentioned, it will be based on construction bids, so if that comes in significantly lower, you, you're not paying based on estimates.
I know storm sewer is nice, but right, we haven't had storm sewer for what, a hundred years out there on those alleys? And the waters run over the top and it'll continue to run over the top and if, if it's shaped properly, it'll run better than it does now.
Correct.
And uh if, if you took the storm sewer out of there and all the repairs that you're making to the, the approaches at each end and the sidewalk and you, you'd, you could knock that cost down, down to half. If you take all the cost that you had in there for sidewalk and valley gutter and sidewalk and curb and gutter and and then tearing up, tearing up uh
So the storm water.
That half a block of street to run the storm sewer up. I don't think you can run it, I don't think you can run it to ninth street either, cause ninth street is higher than the alley. I think you gotta run it down to eighth street, the storm sewer. Unless you can make water run uphill, I don't think you can.
The inverts allowed it, but we did find that eighth street, there was a, there was an intake that had a lower invert elevation, that would be easier to get to.
Couple of feet lower down there than it is up in ninth street. I mean, the water, the whole, all the water runs from ninth street down to eighth street.
And it's a shorter distance, so yep, we, we would intend on changing that design, in design, changing the route, of route.
I, I don't think, I don't think that would work, but, uh, but, I mean, that would, that would greatly reduce the cost.
So we did the same, similar storm sewer in the alley directly behind. Um, the, the intent on that is the storm water that does fall on the road. Um, we've all know oil and water don't mix, the, the more you have water and the more you have over the top of asphalt, that's why every most city streets have curb and gutter. The concrete is better at conveying that water than the storm, or excuse me, than the asphalt is. Um, it tends to strip the oil out of the surfacing. So again, it's a, for a longer lasting product to So, again, it's a, for a longer-lasting product to catch, capture that water, put it into storm sewer, remove it from your asphalt pavement at a faster clip. It, it's intended to improve your overall duration of how long the project would last.
Yeah, but it comes down to a matter of what we can afford and what we can't afford, and, uh, um, yeah. I, I came to Wyndham in nineteen eighty-five, and it was the first year of a five-year street program. And I was hired by Sew Engineering, and I went to work for them for about seven or eight years, but, um, we did over a hundred and thirty blocks in that five-year street project. And the point I'm trying to make is that those streets are thirty-five to forty years old now. And they're getting to the end of their lifecycle without an overlay. And most of them are going to get by with an overlay, but, but we've got, we've got terrible amount of work. And if we were spending this kind of money on each of these projects, I'm saying we're overkilling on this. I think you'd better sharpen your pencil and see what you can do, because we can't afford this.
I apologize, but me sharpening my pencil will only allow you not to budget properly. I'd be happy to give you a number that's low, um, but if it doesn't come in under that, then you're going to be paying for things that you don't have budgeted in your budget.
Well, I, I say storm sewer is wonderful, but I don't think it's absolutely necessary.
And that's a decision you can choose to make. If, if that isn't meet your budgetary requirements, we can remove the storm sewer. It currently does not have storm sewer. So, reviewing the alley approaches, I think they're in as bad or worse condition than the rest of the alley, so I think they need to be done anyway, but the storm sewer would be an additional cost that you could remove, you're correct.
I think, if I can jump in here, Mayor, um, I've been on the street committee the six years that I've been on council, and I feel like we keep kicking this down the road. We keep saying we need to improve streets, and we hear from city, uh, residents that we need to improve streets. Yes, it's gotten expensive, everything has gotten expensive, and that, we're going to continue to see that. I mean, don't think that all of a sudden it's going to drop to half the price if we wait another how many years. I don't think we can wait anymore, and I don't think people want to wait anymore. We need to start addressing our streets. And I don't think a Band-Aid approach is what we need to do either. We, if we're going to do something, we do it right, and we put the money into it, and we need to do, we need to get the water draining away. I mean, if the water continues to stay on it, it, these streets are not going to last like they're intended to. If we don't do all the things that are recommended, they're not going to hold up and stand to this quality of life or life expectancy that, that they're saying. So, I really, I guess, I really push and stand behind, you know, and encourage my fellow council members to look at moving forward with the bituminous reconstruction, um, and, and doing it all as listed. Hopefully, like I said, bids will come in under that. I mean, I think from past, having DGR in here, they always do give us, you know, a buffer, you know, because they know things can come in all over the place, and we don't know that till bids come in. But they've always kind of tended to lean towards, yeah, it's kind of scary to look at the high number, but hopefully it'll come in less than that. But they don't want to get our expectations of it's going to come in here, and then all of a sudden we get the bids and it's way up here, and we're all shocked. And be like, why, DGR, did you tell us that? You know, I think that's why, um, Dan comes in here and gives us that higher ballpark, so that we have that buffer to, to be ready for. But I think we need to support this, we need to move forward with projects. And you said, you know, twenty-eight to thirty-eight percent of the total projects is through special assessments. The rest, yes, we have to look at bonding for, but we need to start doing stuff with streets. And I know other people would like us to see other streets be, be the priority. Right now, this is what we can tackle. And then, like I've told other people before, I really hope that in the next year, uh, that we're looking at that First Avenue and tackling that. And I, it's going to continue to cost us money for streets, it just is, but we need to improve the streets. We cannot just avoid it and kick it down the road, because the next council is going to have to deal with the same thing. So, I would rather just do it the right way the first time around.
As far as the, uh, alleyway, um, being covered, um, with the storm sewer, you said, was it twenty-five to thirty-five years potential lifetime? Without the storm sewer, what would be the expected life of that alleyway?
So, without the storm sewer, it, it wouldn't affect it drastically, but the top is going to be affected. So, it, it kind of depends on if you keep doing chip seals, you might have to add a chip seal sooner than you would have otherwise. So, part of the regular maintenance potentially, but in general, it's, it's going to continue to move water. The current alleys have plenty of grade on them, so it's not an issue of it's so flat that water's sitting there like a pond. So, he's absolutely right that, uh, Councilman, the water will continue to, uh, come off, just as it has now. The biggest reason is we would hope to pick up some of the, um, if you look around the edges, the roof drains, uh, as they come off, like I said, a lot of those are some of the areas that are struggling, even though they probably don't have a whole lot of traffic on them. I think you could definitely benefit those areas long-term. Our new pavement that you put on it, I think, will last longer. To give that exact number, I, I don't think there's a, there's a significant difference where I can just confidently say it's absolutely going to last you an extra five years. But I, I think it'll reduce the amount of maintenance you'll have to do over the lifespan of the project.
How much gravel do you think, uh, anticipates under them alleys? Is, is there, is there four, six inches?
Unfortunately, with the timeline of when we got asked to do this project, we did not do any boring, so I do not have any, um, any information. Looking at some of the potholes, it appears there's at least six inches that, that's been kind of dug out, so it appears that there's at least six inches there. But that also leads me, the surfacing is probably not as much as we're assuming either.
I'm, I'm thinking about when you mill this bituminous off and any granular that you can salvage out of it. If you put that in the bottom of your, your gravel layer.
Yes, that would.
And utilize that.
Yep.
Instead of hauling it out and disposing of it, I, I think it, that would be a, a good use of it, and that might save a little bit on the aggregate base.
Correct, the contractor can recycle it, put it back into the base, but that's at their direction.
Yeah, I mean, when you, when you, you'd mill that entire surface off, that's, that's going to be replaced, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And I do want to clarify just real quickly, I, I apologize if this was a little unclear, but the top row there is total cost, so the nine ninety is everything. The top of that next piece, the total paving cost is seven thirty-nine, so the, the actual paving itself is seven thirty-nine total, and two fifty-one is the broken-out piece. So, if, for instance, you would decide not to do the storm sewer, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand could come out of that co- total cost. So, it is a significant cost. However, like I said, I think it'll last you longer term, and you'd be able to maintain it for longer to where it's more of a perpetual pavement versus where you come to this point, you have to do a complete reconstruct.
Well, I agree, ideally, it's, it's, it's nice to have, but it's, uh, you agree with me, but this nine hundred and ninety thousand, that doesn't include the storm sewer, does it?
It does include the storm sewer, I apologize. So, I want to clarify, nine hundred and ninety.
Well, that, that makes, that makes the numbers look a lot better than if, if that.
It's seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars with the pavement and two hundred and fifty dollars, so I apologize if that's unclear.
You just pulled the storm sewer out separately to show what it is.
To show that the utility was, that portion of it was going directly to a utility.
Because I was coming up with almost a half a million dollars more in costs than what the estimates that I had received prior, you know.
I apologize if that wasn't clear.
So, that would, that would help that two hundred and fifty-one thousand, that would, that would help that.
I think, uh,
But.
But, um, I'm still, uh, I can't, I can't justify the storm sewer myself, but that's where I'm at, and, and, uh, my background in engineering has been very conservative. And when we did the streets here in Wyndham, we, we, we put down two and a half to three inches of mix on top of six inches of gravel. And they're thirty-five to forty years old, I think they served us very well. Isn't that good for thirty-five to forty years? On, a lot of these streets are not that bad yet either, especially on the East Hill. But, um, but I'm thinking about all the work that has to be done. And, uh, you know, these streets are going to, yeah, those hundred and thirty blocks that I was talking about, over the next five years, are going to need to have an overly at the least, you know, and, uh, and, uh, we're going to have to start getting at that, and we just, we just got to be looking to cut wherever we can. That's, that's where I'm coming from. And, uh,
So.
But that's a lot better if it's nine hundred and ninety instead of one point two million.
So, I was thinking, uh, that, uh, you know, obviously, we have a lot of streets in the future and stuff. If this was an actual street that there was a lot of traffic on, I would feel more comfortable, of course, doing the storm sewer. I'm, I'm not real comfortable adding that extra cost, which is quite a bit, and as you mentioned already, there's, uh, really not a, a huge difference, um, potentially in the wear and tear. There's a little more maintenance throughout the years, but, um, that's where I kind of am landing right now.
I, I'm going to make a motion that we proceed, but with elimination of the storm sewer and, and, uh, a lot of the concrete sidewalk and approaches, you know, that the alley approaches for now and, and, uh,
May I? If we had to reseal, coat it and everything today, just that area, what would the CrossFit do to redo that? If it needed, if that's all it needed?
See, it, these streets should be, streets should be sealed-coated every six years regardless.
Well, it says seventy, sixty, yeah, I understand that.
We always had it, we always used to have it on a cycle where every street got resealed.
What I'm getting to, if you'll let me make my point. If they're going to last twenty-five years, and they're going to have to reseal coat it three times in that length of time, would the storm sewer, I guess what my question is, is that putting the storm sewer in going to affect it that much? Where it would have to be, is, if we, the difference between having it sealed-coated every three years compared to every seven years?
So, the storm sewer itself will last a hundred years. We'll put in concrete pipe, that'll be there for at least three pavement cycles. So, that infrastructure is probably a longer-term product. But if you are looking at it as simply a, how often that you seal coat it, um, I just quick-calc, approximately thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars for a seal coat for this area for bo- all three blocks. So, again, it's going to take a long time to make up for that thirteen to fifteen thousand, but you'd need it regardless. It's not, it doesn't go to zero, it may be last an extra one or two years before you have to do it again.
I guess what I was trying to do is consider, take three times that in twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Okay. If you do, what, two alleys and, so you're looking at twenty-six? So, you know, in ten years' time, it's going to pay for that sewer. And what happens, what happens, wha- what happens, what happens if, what happens this summer when it starts to rain in July and the damn water starts coming up out of the river again, do, you know? It's, it's, it's going to have to go back sooner or later too. How long is it going to have to sit there? That's, I, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying it's going to rain that hard, but.
If it rains that bad, the water isn't going to go anywhere anyway. It's going to bubble up out of the storm sewer.
Yes, I understand, just like it did a year ago, however, when it starts going down, how fast is it going to go down? Or is it going to sit there in those alleys and in the yards or whatever? I, you know, I don't know, I'm not into that construction, I don't know.
There's plenty of graves in alleys that the water's going to run out of without storm sewer.
You guarantee that?
Yeah, I do.
Who could have?
They've been, it's been running out there for a hundred years now.
I know how long the storm sewer lasts. We're talking about.
I know, too, yeah. But.
May I address that real quick? Is that okay? Sorry, I know you were waiting. You sure? Okay. One item I did want to bring up with that, so when it's freeze-thaw conditions is the hardest point on pavement. So, when you have ice and snow on the top of roofs, getting that directly into the storm sewer, again, I don't have any concrete, I can tell you it's going to last an extra five years. But in the wrong year, you are going to significantly see distress on the pavement based on the fact that we're not taking that water directly into the storm sewer versus, so it, I, I can't, I don't have a scientific, yep, it's going to be exactly five extra years because of it. That storm sewer will definitely help with the wear on that because of freeze-thaw. When you look at roofs and even alleys, so you talk about, between alleys and concrete, the alleys are, the, the bituminous pavement is darker, so it's going to melt quicker. Well, sometimes the concrete isn't the case, so the water sits there a little bit longer, and it sits on that pavement. It allows it to freeze thaw at night. If you get that storm sewer up into the, these alleys and take it directly off the roofs, it'll get rid of that water. It's kind of a similar thing, maybe it's a little more relatable to everybody in the crowd, to if you have a sump pump in your basement and pumping it out. And the people that know that pump all year round in the winter, that sump pump is a real pain in the tuchus, because it outlets degrade, and it freezes up, and you have issues with it. In this case, we would be rid of that water. Once it melts, it would go directly into the storm sewer instead of being on the pavement and/or in the base of the actual alley. So, again, I don't have a, here's a direct link, and this is exactly how much you're going to save. I just know it's good engineering practice to include them. I'm trying to include that in this process due to that, that, uh, belief. But again, I, I don't have a, this is exactly how much you're going to save because of it, so it, hopefully that helps.
That's pretty much the question answered. I just didn't ask it right, so, but that's one of my concerns, you know, the, uh, it has to be taken care of too, I understand that. But if the water, like you say, the ice, whatever, we, we do have winter here, so we're going to have ice in those alleys too. And then they're going to come by and put salt on them or whatever they do, and what's that going to, you know, eat? There's other things I guess we got to think about too, you know? Yeah, and if we had to do it twenty-five years from now, those people that are on the council are going to say, why in the heck? And maybe not that word, but wasn't this done before? Because it's not going to go down. The prices are not, you know, I, I went to the grocery store, they didn't go down for me, so I just, I just, I don't believe the prices are going to ever go down, so is this a good? Yeah, you said eighty-five, you were here, I understand that, and you did all this, and I'll bet you the price has changed a lot, you know, it was forty years too.
Absolutely.
So, I bet, that's, I guess, what I'm getting at.
The point I'm trying to make is, these streets are laying out there for thirty-five or forty years, and they're going to have to have something done with them too. And we can't be overkilling on every project that we do. And I agree, I, I don't fault you for putting the storm sewer in there. It's, it's good to have, it'd be great, but I'm ready to make a motion on this that we move ahead with the bis- the bituminous and without the storm sewer. And I'll put that, that in the form of a motion, if anybody will second that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to do the, is this option, option one, without the storm sewer? Any further discussion? Jenny?
Sure, I would just again say, um, I think the storm sewer is necessary. I think that we do, if we're going to do it, we do it right the first time, we put the money into it. So, as Jim was saying, twenty-five years from now, that council doesn't look back at us and say, why did you not do that then when it was way? why did you not do that then when it was way cheaper than twenty-five years from now when they're gonna be looking at doing it? So I wouldn't support it without the storm sewer included.
I'd like to agree with Jenny that if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right. And we hired DGR to come do this for us and John, he he's in this too, so I mean, it's, if we can't do it right, why do it at all? And I wouldn't support this motion either.
One thought I was, I don't know who has the answer, how many residents will be assessed in this process?
And there's some alleys down by Higley's and the stuff that had storm sewer put into it and the roof drains and everything. I don't know if anybody's ever drove through any of them during the winter when we've had a good amount of snow. It's a hundred percent better situation. Like I say, the water isn't building up. I've had go down there and chop ice before to try to get it broke up. And there's been three, four inches of ice through some of the alleys where it doesn't bother anymore.
Twenty-three property owners. And several of them own, I tried to get rid of them, so I apologize if that's, it might be twenty-four, it might be twenty-two, but it's really close to that. There's a couple of doubles because they own multiple properties, so.
And are these twenty-three, twenty-four, these are businesses, these aren't homes in this section?
Correct. I'm not aware of any homes along there. There's businesses and a church.
And a few of the business owners have commented that they want roof drains put in.
I have heard that as well. I took a call this morning from somebody that was excited to get this project moving along. So we have this motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Jim, no? So now we'll vote on this motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
So the motion does not carry and do you, is, does someone?
I'll make a motion to accept the DGR's engineering's proposal for the alley work.
I'll second.
Option one, yep, yep. With storm sewers, yep.
I'll second that.
Is made by Scott to accept option one with the storm sewer, second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So now we need Now we need to call for a public hearing. Is that correct?
Correct.
And do we need to read this? So we introduce the notice of a public hearing and we need a motion on this?
I'll introduce it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jim, second by Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Nope.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is the resolution receiving the feasibility report and calling for the public hearing. Benson?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Esplin?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yeah.
Quaid?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Dan, by the way.
Happy to help.
Thank you. We're on to the city website rebuild agreement with Revised Web Services. You wanna take that, Steve?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So in the twenty-twenty-five budget that we talked about rebuilding the city's website, it's been about a decade old. Our person that did our website work has retired, so our support is going away on that. And there was a number of things that needed to be improved. And so what we did is we did a request for proposal that was sent out to nine firms that do website development. I got a list from the League of Minnesota Cities with firms they've used and what some other municipalities in Minnesota have used. And then we had a couple other ones come in through staff, was aware of a couple of businesses. So we sent those nine RFPs out. Four responses came back to that RFP. We had a project management team we put together. It had a staff member from, two staff members from telecom, myself and another person from the city office, a person from the community center, a person from PD. That might be it. And so we looked through those RFP responses and picked out three of them to interview. We interviewed, I think it was the twenty-sixth of March, we did three one-hour interviews with three leading candidates. And after we got done with the interviews, we looked at each other and said, okay, let's discuss which one we liked the best. And they all said, that one. And it was the last one we did. And so it was unanimous across the board that Revised was the company that everyone liked. So that was good, that it had all the pieces that we were looking for. The technology guys and telecom recovered as far as the backend infrastructure on this. And as far as having the ability to make some changes in it. This was, they're very well thought of. They've got a list of, they do Contonwood County's website as one of them. They do, they do City of Marshall, City of Wilmer and a number of them that we had looked at online. Some of the other concerns we had with this, the state of Minnesota is requiring that municipalities go to a dot gov domain. A lot of cities have voting and they run the voting. Absentees, here it's done through the county, but some cities do it. And so they want consistency across the state for all municipalities have dot gov domains. So we'll have to change that. That's something this company will do for us. The other thing that the state of Minnesota is requiring is all municipalities, depending on your size, have to be ADA compliant. They have to be WAG two-point-oh requirement. Cities our size have until April of twenty-twenty-seven. Other cities have until April of twenty-twenty-six. So the larger cities have this year to do it. Rather than, you know, like I said, we had some things that we wanted to fix up on ours anyway and our support was going away. I think this is a good time to do it because I think in the next year, there's gonna be quite a rush of people to get through this. And so we had budgeted about fifteen thousand out of the general fund and then the utilities and they're going to kick in a little bit on on their portion. You can see the first year total, this is for building the site and the first year of support is twenty-three thousand nine hundred. And then after that, there's a fifty-four, well, after the second year, there's a fifty-four hundred dollar annual hosting and maintenance. And they will go through our site, make sure it's, we're meeting our ADA compliances, fix anything, security patches, any of those type of things that need to be done. And then one of the other selling points in this was that after the year four, they rebuild the website for you. They will do a refresh on it. It won't be a complete ground up, but it will be a a refresh of the site. So that was something else that was attractive to our group. So we're recommending that we approve this contract with Revised for the web service agreement. The city attorney has reviewed it. I had also sent it to the League of Minnesota Cities. Attorney up there and their contracts attorney have reviewed it. And so we're, we added the language that they suggested and so it is ready to approve if so, if the council so chooses to do that. Anybody have any questions on it?
Steve, that's that's in the budget.
Yeah, you had budgeted the fif- fifteen and then we were, out of the general fund and then we'll have parts of it that will get assigned to the utilities. But we didn't want to put a number in until we knew what our our cost was going to be on this side, so.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the bid for for Revised for the building of the city website.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jason. Is there any further discussion?
So Steve, how, when they start this, what, how long of a process or what kind of timing are we looking at?
Thank you, councilmember. That was one thing I was hoping someone was going to ask. The total process from week one to week twenty-six, so it's about a six-month-long process. There are some milestones along the way. It might be a little sooner. I don't think it'll be any later, but it might be a little sooner than that. It's, just depends on how fast we can get things going. We want to keep some of the stuff from our current site and not necessarily the web content. Of course, we'll keep some of that and look at updates, changes that need to be made. But we have things now, like you can get your building permit online and pay for it by credit card. We've got that set up through that payment processor. That payment processor needs to work with this new website. Same thing with like Riverbend Liquor, you can buy liquor online. We've got a credit card processor there. Doesn't necessarily go through this website portal, but we could have that hooked in. We want to make sure that works. If you have swimming lessons or ice time, that all runs through ActiveNet or if you sign up for ba- summer baseball, that's through ActiveNet. Again, that goes out on our current website. We want to make sure that ActiveNet stuff plays well with the software as well. So we've got to make sure all those things just plug in and work correctly. So there's a lot of moving pieces to it, but that's where we're kind of pushing the company to get it done. But their timeline is that twenty-one to twenty-six weeks is their typical.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, it's good that we're using the same system that the county, if people have been familiar with using the county website. I think that that's laid out pretty well. It's easier to find things than how our city website is. And so I think that that's gonna be a good, a good thing for us. And it's good to see how they've done, how they designed and how the county website's going to know that this is a good company and hopefully will work well for us.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is the Planning Commission Conditional Use Permit for Island Park. And we'll have Matt here from Planning and Zoning to speak on that.
Good evening, Matt Fast, Planning or Building and Zoning. City of Wyndham filed an application requesting a conditional use permit to allow the addition of fill in excess of one thousand cubic yards in the flood fringe area. Purpose of the fill is to construct a permanent berm on the northern side of Island Park to help mitigate future flooding in the area outside the park and highways adjoining the park. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. The commission tabled its recommendation and requested answers to three questions. One, regarding a question and clarification from the DNR. Two, the future location of the dog park. And three, contact with the property owner concerning a potential easement. After the meeting, Dan Van Sheppen updated concept Platten One, which is dated March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and provided additional information to Gary Bennett from the Department of National Resources. Following communications with Mr. Van Sheppen and Andy Spielman and review of the information provided, Mr. Bennett replied by email, "Based on the foregoing and the additional information provided in your email, the DNR has no significant concerns with this proposal, which appears to comply with the minimum floodplain regulations." The Park and Recreation Commission recommended moving the dog park within Island Park. The commission also recommended approval of the berm project on the condition that the dog park is relocated and open for use in Island Park following the construction of the berm. City officials have contacted the agent for the owner of their property where an easement would be required and confirmed that they are willing to work with the city on this easement. This information was presented to the Planning Commission on April eighth. The commission reviewed the finding of facts set forth in the code. Then the Planning Commission approved a recommendation that the city council approve this conditional use permit application for the addition of fill in Island Park.
So we need a motion to approve the conditional use permit application submitted by the city that was approved by the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission for use of a permanent, for Island Park berm.
I'll second it.
Motion by Scott, second by Jim. Is there any discussion?
I would like just a quick explanation to the public about accepting the CUP. What does that mean for the next year or so?
Well, that's kind of in your next item is the discussion on that. So the, this is just the conditional use permit that would be a step in moving that project forward if the city council so chooses to do it. And the CUP is good for a year from the date of issuance. So you have some time to have that discussion. And so I think that's your next item on the agenda, but this is one step in that process. It started, you know, obviously with the twenty-twenty-four council approving or the concept initially and then having the hydrology study and approving preliminary engineering and that kind of thing. So you're kind of at a decision point now, after the CUP was granted, CUP wasn't granted, you wouldn't have this next step to have discussion.
Further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Now we are on to the Island Park Berm Project Discussion, number eight on our agenda here. So we have some options here with approving the CUP. And I mean, everybody read this, I assume. So our options to consider are to move ahead with the berm project, concept number one, which would be the final des- design, discussion of funding and procuring bids and contractors. We can put concept one project on hold for further discussion, identification of funding options or awaiting FEMA's decision on the swimming pool. The conditional use permit is good for one year and is very specific to the option that was prior presented, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Or we can take no action on concept one to allow for time to research other alternatives. Does anyone have any input here?
How will this affect the swimming pool? I mean?
Dan is still here. The the berm does not go on onto the pool. So it goes behind the pool and then by Education Minnesota, the parking. So it doesn't really affect the pool other than that the pool is on the backside of the berm. However, if you were going to do a, an expansion of the pool at its current site, this berm would impact, you know, a future expansion or rebuild of that potentially. But we're not to the spot on knowing what the pool's gonna happen, so we're kind of in a, in a tough spot right now. I did get an email from FEMA today, which I shared with John. So they're looking at it and they're kicking it into their insurance review as well. They gave us some ideas on, you know, possible mitigation, if we wanted to look at mitigation. Oh, we can raise the heaters or the sand filters, things like that. But that's not a mitigation type of project, so that's where it's going in their next step. So it is proceeding through the FEMA system.
Well, I don't want to be accused of a naysayer, but I really think that's a poor place for a swimming pool, I always have.
I would like to, I would like to see what FEMA finally comes up with before we take, we go too far down the road. Not yet. It's not a motion yet.
I guess I would just want to say, I know we want to wait and see what FEMA has to do, do it. Either way, we gotta get going with this because as we know, time material, everything is gonna keep creeping up higher and higher. Now, this is just my thought, that the pool will never probably be built back in that spot anyway. Because it's, with its present state, we'd have to tear it down all the way to the ground and build it all the way back up. And I don't think we can do it in the floodplain that I know of anymore. Being as it is in a floodplain and it is in such terrible condition. Because that pool, I'm on the parking rack and they said the pool is in such terrible dis- disarray right now with all the pumps and all the concrete and everything like that. with all the pumps and all the concrete and everything like that in such poor condition. We'd have to start over from scratch anyway. So we'd have probably look at maybe moving the pool to a different location. But anyway, as far as this one, I would like to see the, the berm get started. Because we don't know what tomorrow has to bring. And I hate to say, if we wait for another year and we get flooded again, there we sit. And with all the work that we had to go through and the city went through to get where we are again today, it's a lot of work to put us back together again. So I guess I would like to see the number one start off, but that's not real. Wait and see what everybody has to say. Thank you.
I would like to also maybe explore to see if this is indeed the best option. Because I, I wonder how the interplay goes between how the river moves, D N R, and any other possible situations. I understand that this berm is not necessarily a cure all as well because we don't have a guarantee that during a flood event, it would actually hold for some days. And supersaturation, as we all know, does strange things to soil and environs. So we're not in a super rush to decide because it is good for a year. So I think we can, we certainly have a plan we could go to, but I just don't want to rush into it.
I know council has seen another possibility that's been sent out about the berm going in a, in a different direction, maybe sweeping a wider area of Island Park. I'm just not for sure, you know, because we've put the energy into where, where we currently are planning to have the berm with D N R and looking at how that works. If we would include further, further into Island Park and include more around the baseball field, I would think that that's going to impact the water flow more. I don't know that D N R would. Do you have any thoughts on how that would play out, Dan?
Yeah, so that was the clarification that was asked of, I think it was the second point in his, in, in what the Planning Commission asked. The clarification from the D N R was he was looking at FEMA regulations for anything in the floodway. The floodway, there's another set of Army Corps of Engineer rulings that come into play, which is why we intentionally kept the, we're calling it a berm on purpose. The difference between the berm and a levee is a levee is an engineered structure. It includes a foundation. The foundation is made of dirt, but it's still a foundation that's four foot wide, ten foot deep through the core of the berm to not allow for what you had talked about is to have some sort of a liquefaction of that structure under long-term water condition. What that does is it keeps the water from finding a way around your berm that you put in. The berm we were doing, we would intentionally build above grade that way, but we weren't planning on doing anything below grade, which is potentially granular of some sort and would allow potentially that water movement. So again, like you had said, that was the clarification. They initially had put in the email that they asked us in the first place is if we were preventing stable, how stable that berm would be in the end. And that's not something we could sign off on because we didn't put that core trench in, which is part of the Army Corps rulings. So my understanding of it is, and again, we can ask for more. These are very detailed things that very specialty people usually do when you get into the levee world. But typically, when you cross that boundary, that floodway boundary, that's when a lot more rules come in. And that, and I believe you've seen this email, but I sent it early on, the difference in cost between what we were kind of looking at for, for this particular version to anything that entered and crossed that floodway. Now, I think the first version that I had and the version that I've seen since then is slightly less distant. So again, my cost wasn't directly, but the cost was tenfold. I mean, the difference was tenfold. So we're talking an extreme amount of, because of that amount of dirt that has to come out. I mean, you basically have to excavate a trench ten foot down and then repack it full of lean clay. So it's a very specific material that you have to get from very specific places. And that really increased the cost. I think that, that piece of it alone was half a million dollars. So it's more than what we were talking for the options or, or just to do a, a berm, if you will, instead of a levee, so.
Do they ever make exceptions, especially in light of the fact that this is not a residential area that would be, I meant, you know, up to the berm that's suggested here, then the residences are on that side. But it would be in an area where there's no residences. Do they ever make exceptions or?
They make, they don't make exceptions to the fill rule simply because over time, people tend to build stuff when they put fill in it. And what they don't want to do is encourage residents to do that. So they're allowing this berm to happen, knowing that you're creating a berm and not filling the whole area in. If you were filling the whole area in, then they would require you to do a study that showed what the effect was on things. And, and frankly, you have a lot of people that were at the Planning Commission meeting. Sorry, I'm pointing at no one in particular, but they were at the Planning Commission meeting and those citizens were concerned actually about the other side of the river because of the erosion that's occurring on the river because of flooding events and other things. Their concern was how, how is diverting more water that way or faster going to affect that riverbank? So again, whatever study occurs in this case and, and, and potentially entering that floodway, I'm, I'm thinking we'll have to include some sort of it. But again, that'll be by a specialized engineer that does these type. I mean, I can aid that process, but I won't be the, I won't be the sole engineer signing off on a report like that. If that was clear.
So I guess, you know, what I'm kind of pointing out to the public, I think the majority of us would love to say, let's just build something around the ball field down there so that we can save that. I mean, in the ideal world, that's what we'd all like to do so that we don't have to keep doing things over and over to the ball field and that added expense. But realistically, it comes down to if we were going to create something around that ball field to try to save that from ever flooding, it's going to take a lot more, the Army Corps of Engineers, a lot more, I don't know, planning, researching, studies, those kind of things. So that expense, I think, is going to be tremendous compared to, I mean, I hate to say that every, you know, how many years we're going to have to redo things at the ball field, but you know, that's kind of what we've done in my lifetime here. We've had to do that a few times. It's unfortunate, but you know, it's, it's Island Park, it's by a river. And I think it's just hard to say that the city should invest that kind of money in researching to put that around there. We could, you know, spend the money and, and put things in other locations if we really needed to. So I guess I'm, I wouldn't be in support of, you know, doing more research and spending more money to look at other options. I would rather just go with the current berm project that, that we have been looking at doing.
Do you have anything, Jason?
Um.
Or Jim, sorry, Jason first.
No, it's fine. The erosion on the other bank is kind of ancillary, I think. It does obviously play a part. If we, if we, if we did some type of mitigation on that other bank, is that, is that very problematic because of the D N R and FEMA and any floodplain concerns? Does that necessarily get into a very lengthy thing to put some type of a separate thing in the future on that other bank to prevent further erosion from the river?
So yeah, it would actually be two pieces to that. So first, the first thing, if you decided to go with some sort of path that enters the floodway, you would have to get an engineered report that has a no rise certificate to it, which is what you actually got for this other version. So that, that was that first step. And in that big case, because of where it was in the floodplain, it didn't affect the actual rise because it's outside of, and the, the whole intent of what the floodway is, is basically that's the area where the D N R plans for the majority of the water to go when it floods. And it, and it calculates the statistics in that, that, excuse me, that footprint or that section. Outside of that, it's below the level of that. So it can have backwater, but it's basically, it's not where the water is flowing and it isn't part of the calculation that they say we need to protect people up to a certain elevation, which is those cross-sections that they give you. So it says floodwaters in a hundred year are going to be at these certain numbers. So it says there will be water back here because you're below that number, but you're not part of the actual floodway. So we'll allow you to fill it in certain circumstances. Well, that certain circumstance is what we were trying to work around. The second you recreate or change that, they will actually, so getting them to say yes is one thing. I'm, it depends on what you do. So again, I can't give you a blanket, yep, it's going to definitely, but if it changes the waterway heights, then you have to actually engineer ways where you make the flow bigger. So you'd have to actually take out sections to allow more flow so that the flow height doesn't get higher. So if you make a restriction, you'd have to go deeper or some other way. Make a different path wider. There's a lot of different ways that this could occur, but the problem is, is right now is in this particular situation, the bridge, the, the highway bridge is your, is a barrier that is only so wide. So kind of back here, whatever you're doing, there's a chance it doesn't change it because you're, you know, you already have that restriction or it may affect it a lot and you won't know that until you spend significant amount of dollars studying it. And that would include, you know, last time it was done without a topographic survey even. I mean, even just the survey for that, there's going to be some cost to that. I mean, that's a lot of up, down, using the Johnny boat crossing. I mean, there's some significant things there that just that one step alone is going to be thousands of dollars just to get you closer to an answer, plus the research after the fact, so.
It, it almost feels like Island Park is, is going to be a perpetual money pit in a sense because of the flooding that happens every so many years and redoing fields and this, this constant thing. It's done that two or three times since I've lived here and then other times. So I, I appreciate you explaining that and I appreciate the complexity and the fact that there are multiple entities involved and it's overlapping and not a simplex process to get to you to this point for the berm that we have in front of us, so thank you.
I guess I agree with what you say, Jason, Island Park is going to be a problem. It always has been. Just inside the gate is where the original channel for the river use was run. And it's been changed, so it goes down around the hall. But our original plan, what we were worried about is protecting those houses along there and the highway. And that's all it was. I don't think you're going to protect that ball field ever. I really don't, no matter what you do. And as far as whether it's a levee or a berm, you can go down here to the bottom of Fourth Avenue, look off where Joe Elsie had his garage where he used to park his school buses. That used to be all flat. And now you can't see over that bank because they built that up. That's a berm is what I would call it. Jody Orky out here on the river road did basically the same thing years ago. I believe it was, maybe it wasn't, but you can fix and fix and fix, but are you going to cure? I don't know. I think the cure right now is probably do that berm. And protect what we can at least until we know different.
I just have one more comment too, after hearing Jason. The, across the river from in Island Park, when you, I don't know, what is that street? Is it Sixth Avenue? That goes up by rainbows and?
Yes, that is Sixth Avenue.
So Sixth Avenue there, when you look, when you're in Island Park and you look towards that direction and, you know, the erosion that's happened there, I think we've talked about it even in the street department, you know, about eventually that erosion, what could happen with that street there? You know, it is getting to where, you know, trees and, you know, and I think we had conversations, I believe, too, about just putting like riprap or putting something there to try to hold it and just the, the studies and the costs and the things behind, you know, doing any kind of alteration there is very, very expensive. And we know that there is concern about, you know, things eroding on that side already. So I'd hate to put any additional water or, you know, moving this berm any further back to go near the ball field or whatever to add more water towards where it's already, to me, at a point where I, we'd be watching it and, you know, concerned about that street at some point. Maybe not in my lifetime, but the next council's.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the Island Park berm project where it is.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jim, is there any discussion? I would like to say that I think if you guys have all thought about this really good and hard. I mean, we all saw that email from Scott and I have met with some people. I think there's a lot of concern, or maybe some people that have a lot of knowledge, not to say that you don't at all, that would really, there's a lot of community members that would like to see us hold off. I mean, I get the point that, you know, it's ready, let's do something. At the same time, this conditional use permit is good for a year. It does leave us a lot of time to explore. I know that Scott is open to answering questions or talking to people. And I think he's just part of that crew that they got it done for us when we needed it done in a quick hurry in June. And I think that there's been projects done in Laverne that worked through some of these things that seem like major obstacles, but I think it's possible. Of course, it's not my decision, but I think it's just something to really consider. I'd love to see like options two and three moved into one to just hold off for a minute, see how, I mean, the school's going to be, I'm not saying we can save the ballpark, but they're going to be playing at the ballpark regardless. I just would like to see us hold off for just a little bit to ask questions and maybe make some more contacts. That's my discussion. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I would, I would just like to reiterate the fact that I just feel like, I would like to hear more. I'd like to see things that might be possible. And I would like to see what FEMA finally settles upon and see if that somehow interacts with, with this in some way that we haven't foreseen.
One more, I think, you know, then Jason, you know, that prior to you coming on council, I think we've been in discussion since the flood, this council has been. And going through the, so, you know, I understand where you're not as up on, on, on the past because in this past year, we have had a lot of conversation. So I think maybe that's why there's a little bit of apprehension of the new people that, you know, haven't been a part of all the different discussions that we've had compared to those of us that have been around since the flood and talking about this. But, so I understand your apprehension of, you know, moving forward. I just hate for Hillary to be out there sandbagging again, so that's why I'm moving forward.
I mean, something has to be done. I guess I would be in favor of tabling it for a certain length of time. However, how long is a certain length of time? You know, it doesn't make any difference to me. I am not going to live in down here where I'm going to get flooded. I got flooded at home, so nothing I can do about that and I'm not putting up a berm, so.
I do have a titch of apprehension based on not having the full history of all the information. But it's also, I understand that in the community, there are many minds that can come up with things that we haven't considered yet. It's not just about the money, it's also about the future of the park. Because putting up a berm does of the park, um, because putting up a berm does not save the park at all from anything, really. It does mitigate to the residences, which I'm thankful for, that aspect of it. Um, so I would like to maybe, um, it is April, maybe for at least a month to see what ideas maybe start percolating up to the surface, and see if there's anything fresh that, uh, may, um, countervail. Uh, and we can still go ahead with this if there is nothing forthcoming.
So we need to vote on the motion that's on the table, correct? So, and I'm sorry, who made it? Scott made it? And Jim second. And we had our discussion, and now we're gonna vote all in favor of moving ahead with the berm project concept one as described in the conditional use permit. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, I keep hitting this thing. Okay, so we've got three to two to move forward with the concept as shown in the conditional use permit. Correct?
Correct, so then your next discussion will be budgeting and timeline and going out for engineering and bidding, right?
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Well, anything else on that then? Do we need like a five-minute break, or should we hammer the rest of this out?
Let's hammer.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Dan.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, Liquor Store, John Nelson is gonna speak on Liquor Store Expansion Project, Seeding and Grading Completion and Landscaping Project.
John Nelson, Liquor Store Manager, I'll try to keep this quick. So my first item is another change order, uh, supposed to be change order number ten to Liquor Store Project. Um, last August, we approved final payment except for thirty-five-hundred dollars. Um, that was withheld from the final payment to Sustern Construction, um, as the seeding project, um, was not completed yet. Um, that got delayed, which surprisingly, talking about all this flooding, we had a dry late summer and fall, so it wasn't appropriate time to put down a bunch of seed. Uh, we looked at doing it this spring. Um, but, um, later on the agenda here, I have some landscaping projects, and I looked into options of, um, combining those two projects into one, so, um, so I talked with Kevin Kurth, the project manager, and he was on board with this. Um, suggestion came out to do a change order to deduct thirty-five-hundred dollars from the contract. Uh, this would close out that contract, um, that we have with them. Um, so this will be a thirty-five-hundred dollar deduct to the Liquor Store Project.
I would make a motion to accept the change order number ten of removal of the seeding.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Jason, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
All right, second item with the approval of that change order, um, along with our landscape project, um, which will be the next item, uh, to get a local contractor to do that seeding work. Um, I received two, uh, estimates, uh, one from Nielsen Landscape in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and twelve cents, and a second from Colseth Lawn Landscape and Concrete in the amount of three hu- three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, is Liquor Commission's recommendation to approve the low estimate of three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to Colseth. Uh, this would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars savings over that contract work with that deduction you guys just approved.
I'd make a motion to accept the seeding and grading completion, uh, amount.
Motion by Jason, second by Dennis, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
And my third action item, uh, so, um, with the Liquor Store Project, we knew that even before going into that landscape was in dire need uh, down there at the Liquor Store, it has been avoided for many, many years, um, with the unknown of what we were gonna do with that building. Um, so with that, um, now that the Liquor Store Project is complete, I reached out, um, to local contractors and got two estimates back, one being Nielsen Landscape in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents, the other from Colseth Lawn Landscape and Concrete in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, so it is the Liquor Store's recommendation to approve the low estimate of seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to Colseth. Uh, this was set as a twenty-twenty-four capital improvement, um, plan, um, of about five thousand dollars. Um, we did not budget for that in this year's, um, capital improvement, um, pro- project or plans. Uh, so this will come under our repairs and maintenance budget for grounds work.
So the additional three grand will be coming out of there?
This would be seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to accept this landscaping project cost with curse of.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jason, second by Scott, any discussion?
The landscaping, that'll, that's with the decorated rock and all that stuff around there, so it'll make the building look much more attractive to people coming by and people using the building itself, so I think, I think it'll is a great addition to the building, it'll make things popper on there.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Thanks, John. Personnel Committee?
Jason is here, he's got a hire for a line, uh, person. He sat there for two hours, you might as well talk.
Jason Skora, Electric Utility Manager. Um, as in, in the action memo that I gave out, um, we did recently lose a line worker to South Central Electric, um, Levi Bunting, who had been with us almost seven years, accepted a position, um, at South Central Electric. So his last day after using up occurred vacation, and that was, uh, April eleventh. So, um, being as we were going into construction season, we quickly posted, um, and we did get four local applicants right from the Wyndham area, who'd all been to line school or had electrical knowledge. Um, of those four, we interviewed three of those, and, um, after a pretty long debate back and forth, we decided to, um, recommend to the council the hiring of Cody Mishke. Um, he will be step one of lineman wage, line worker wage in the IBW wage scale.
I'll make a motion to accept a recommendation from Electric Department to hire Cody.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jason, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Next up, John wants to talk on his seasonal help with the Park and Street Department.
Good evening again. Um, we needed several summer help and everything, and I'd like the council to rehire Ken Derrickson and Cameron Ellis. Um, they'd be at the top of their part-time pay scale, Ken's worked for the Street Department for eight years now, and Cameron be back on her third year.
I'd make a motion to accept your proposal for seasonal help for the Park and Street Department.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, second by Jim, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you guys again.
Thanks, John. Next up, EDA Director Resignation, Transition and Advertising Authorization. Jason, you can start with that and pass it to Steve.
Sure, um, as of late, um, we have found ourselves in the position of accepting the resignation from Tiffany Lamb, and of course, Steve has some more details to share, but, um, with that being said, we're gonna have to, uh, authorize some, uh, advertising to get a new EDA Director, so, Steve.
Uh, thank you, council member, uh, yeah, Tiffany resigned, uh, April ninth, uh, that was her effective date as well. Um, so in her, uh, letter that's in the packet, she offered some possible transitional help. Um, personnel discussed it a little bit, and we're still kinda debating. Um, if we're gonna need it, we're gonna kinda look through some of the projects and see where we're at with it. Um, and so when we talked to personnel, the discussion was, one, to accept the resignation, since it was tendered, um, two, to authorize the negotiation of a short-term, uh, transitional employment agreement, and if it's needed, um, you know, then be subject to Personnel Committee approving it before it went any further, and then lastly, the, um, the recommendation to re-advertise the position as EDA Director position and get it out there ASAP, so, um, we have provided the ad to the paper, it should be out, um, hopefully tomorrow, starting. Um, got it listed in the League of Minnesota City site, and I believe it's on either the Iowa or the South Dakota League site. Um, we got it starting, uh, tomorrow, so, uh, we'll go that direction, see how our applications come in. Um, I'm hoping that we get a little more interest than we did when we hired Ms. Lamb. I think, um, Mr. Haggy had been gone almost nine months, and we had several iterations of that job, trying to get, have something out there that would fit what our applicant pool was. This time around, we're hoping the applicant pool fits our job description rather than the other way around, so keep your fingers crossed for us.
Are you going to lower any of the expectations such as to a coordinator?
Uh, tha- that's one of the options, I think what we're gonna do, uh, at least what we discussed was, we'll advertise it as EDA Director, um, it's a bit more of an attractive salary, get that out there, see what our applicant pool looks like, and if we have folks that are coming in that are applying but don't have any experience, I think we would then kinda pull that, uh, EDA Coordinator application out and and having, having him look at, look at that, uh, position. So, and that would be, go back to Personnel when we would cross that bridge. Uh, we also did, um, I forgot, like I mentioned, we brought it up at the EDA meeting on Monday, so they're aware of obviously the situation, and they're supportive of refilling position, and probably one member of their committee would, um, be on a hiring, uh, group when that time comes.
Um, can I just make a suggestion that maybe we look at, um, seeing if we can advertise on KDOM as well and get that out to a, a larger, I believe they have a larger than the local Wyndham area, um, reach too with the way they advertise for, um, employment. I'm just thinking, we need to reach as far as we can with this. And the more, the more that we could do that, the better to try to get a better, uh, candidate pool.
So we can make one motion to move all of these pieces forward?
I, I think that's up to the council, if you wanna take those individually, or if you just wanna make one motion to accept the Personnel Committee's three recommendations as presented, that would be sufficient as well.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, who's actually gonna second that? Dennis? Thanks. Still adjusting. So Scott made the motion, Dennis second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, new business, Mindot Roundabout Concept Work Sessions Request. Uh, I think we... Did we have an email about this with everybody, or?
I think that was, uh, I think she had reached out to you initially, and then, uh, I emailed and copied you on it, so.
So, um, I heard from Mary Lefler at Mindot, I did meet with her and Ann Wolf, uh, I'm not sure when that was, maybe three weeks ago. Um, I went for an hour meeting, it took two and a half hours, which was really good to learn from them, but it really did take a long time. And they mentioned at that point wanting to do, uh, work session with council, as this roundabout is gonna come up very quick, and they just wanna explain things to all of us, so that we all understand it really well. Um, we initiated conversation by email, Steve, Mary and I, during the week. Um, so they, they think it's gonna take more than an hour, maybe hour and a half, but if we wanted to do something prior to a council meeting, um, I believe she said she requests June seventeenth, if we do it at five o'clock, correct? Um, otherwise, they are very, very flexible, they can do anything, any time of day. Their goal is to have the work session on the week of June ninth or June sixteenth. So, Steve, do you have?
I, I think, uh, mentioned to you before the meeting, if you wanna do it on an off Tuesday, the second Tuesday of June is the tenth. You know, if you wanna do a work session rather than starting at, you know, cause council meeting normally starts at six-thirty, you'd have to meet, you know, probably at five to give them that hour, two hour and a half before your meeting. Um, and that kinda makes a long night for you guys too, but if you wanna do it all in one night, that's up to you, or if you wanna pick a different night, um, like, uh, the mayor said, they said the week of the ninth or the week of the sixteenth are their two preferences. Um, but the seventeen just happens to be that, or, yeah, the tenth happens to be the second Tuesday, so.
I do know off the top of my head that the seventeenth is gonna be, uh, a problem for my end. And I would like to say too, I did meet with those two individuals from Mindot, and I just have to, I just wanna say a couple of comments for the public. Um, uh, I thought it was, uh, it was very well played on their part, um, because um, they acknowledged that there was a communication um, issue along the way, which was misleading to some people in the community. And then, of course, we had that very, uh, tragic, um, uh, accident, uh, which took the life of one of our friends and community members. Um, and all that stuff happened right around the time that QuickTrip was just finishing up, so they explained all this, and the way they explained it, I thought was very tasteful, very forthcoming, and I think that, uh, um, we're gonna have some productive, uh, conversations and, uh, input uh, as we go through these meetings.
I'd like to add the street lane in there, or the stoplight in there, and see if we can't get a better price. And also, what about the roads out here, what they were gonna change back, that they've been pretty busy, I know, they haven't been able to do that, but.
We did talk about that, both of those things actually, but I think that's great conversation for our work session. Um, so, do we need to just be thinking about this right now, or?
Yeah, I think you've got another meeting if you wanna look at your schedules, um, she said just to let her know, but, um, June is a little ways off, you have several meetings, but if you wanna wait till the next meeting, I think that's probably okay, we'll just let them know that.
We talked about it?
Yep.
Okay, so everybody cool with that, we're just gonna look at our schedules and see what we can come up with?
When you were talking to them, is the city gonna have any input on that roundabout? As to it doesn't end up like the one just going into Worthington where the semis keep tipping over?
See exactly how this was worded. Um, do you remember how she worded that, to get, I mean, there was something to go over some concept ideas for the roundabout, so when you say ideas to me, I feel like
I think they're looking for some input.
Yeah. We get to choose not what it is.
John gets it coming too.
If the council does it, it'll be a public meeting, so, um.
Like returning it to a four lane out there after the roundabout?
Hold out for that, please.
That'll be the first time we got any input towards Mindot, cause they didn't wanna have nothing to do with, what they wanted, something to do with, they just didn't wanna hear what we had to say. Cause last time they were down here, they were straight up that they're gonna do it their way and their way only. Because the last time they were down here, they were straight up that they're going to do it their way and their way only. So I'm glad they're opening their dialogue up to us.
They were very cool with me, I mean, we sat there for a long time and from some of the emails I had read, I expected Mary to be an older grumpy lady that, I didn't. No, don't wear the shoe, Jim, it doesn't fit you. But that is what I was expecting and she is this young, really meek, super sweet girl that they just explained everything very well. I mean, obviously, there's still some irritations with the road, but I felt much better about my perception of Mindot after I left that meeting, which was, I really needed that, so it was really nice to meet with them. So I think it should be a good, informative, productive meeting, I mean, I'm looking forward to it.
And I would say further, this would be really important for the public to come forward and to let their voices be known. They will have a chance to speak and if they are speaking, no, no, not public comment, I didn't mean it like that. I meant they can, they can bring comments to us and we will obviously bring them forward, but they need to let their voices be heard. And if, you know, they have, the more solid thinking and reasoned responses, they do speak powerfully, so.
If you were up to the community center, when they were up there, you would have heard them loud and clear because there was voices being spoken and very different choice of words being used, but I still have a very sour taste in what they left here in my mouth from when they were here visiting with us last time. Because they said they were willing to work with us, but as long as we did it their way. That's not, that's not working together, in my book anyway.
And I kind of got the impression, when you first started talking, you mentioned something about playing something and I think they were trying to play us and probably still are.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was Mary that I had the problem with, it was the ones that came back that last time here and that we really butted heads.
And I do think at some level, they're aware of some of that friction and I am optimistic that we will have some positive interactions with them as we go through this because they do take the events that happened last year very seriously and I felt like there was some humility that was coming from Mindot towards the city and so I'm hopeful.
Okay, so we'll all keep that in the back of our minds and we'll get a date set at one of the next meetings here. Old Business, City Council Facility Tour Dates and Times. We had previously set up for April 29th and May 13th, which are the off Tuesdays, but we've since realized that we cannot do that tour on May 13th.
That's the day of the school election and so we can't have a public meeting on the day of a school election by statute, so. We'll have to pick either another date to have that back half of the tour or if you wanted to tack on maybe an hour after each council meeting in subsequent weeks. Tonight's ran a little long, but the other two, last two council members were, council meetings were relatively short and where after the council meeting, we could, you could adjourn here, walk over to the library or walk over to the police department or walk over to the emergency services building or telecom. We could hit one of those or two of those each night so you wouldn't have to set up a special evening, but it's how you would like to do it. So the April 29th, I'm planning on, we're going to start with outside stuff. We'll go see the electric department, wastewater, those kind of things that have outside things to see and get those knocked out and then the other ones that are inside, we could maybe do one Z, two Z at a time, but I just, you know, threw that out as an option.
What time would we look at starting on the 29th?
Do you want to do 5:00 or 5:30? I mean, if folks are working, you know, and then get a chance, get home, grab bite to eat, 5:30, but if you want to start right at 5:00 and can make that work, that's, that's really up to you all.
5:00 would be okay with me.
Everyone good with 5? Okay, 5:00, April 29th, we'll do the electric, water, wastewater.
Well, I'll get a list out, we will post it because it will be a public meeting, so we'll get everything posted and I'll get you an agenda and a timeline of where we're going to go. I need to work that out with the departments, so.
So should we do that one and then come back to the discussion on the rest of them?
If you can kind of let me know at that meeting what you'd like to do, if you want to tack it on or just pick another day, but think about it for a little bit and we can talk about it on 29th.
Council Comments. Jim, do you have anything tonight? Jason, have you got anything?
I just very much appreciate the candor that we're allowed to have in these settings and we really appreciate all the thoughts and emails and calls from the public, so keep it going.
Dennis has nothing, Jenny?
Yes, I attended last night the Wyndham Area Health Auxiliary Spring Banquet and at that banquet, was able to present the 25-year volunteer award to Marge Pashke. And as I was there and learning, she is the 17th member that has reached the 25-year mark of being a volunteer on the auxiliary. And so it is, it's just really crazy to see how long-term and dedicated the volunteers at auxiliary are and also to point out that the auxiliary is for men and women can get on the Wyndham Area Health Auxiliary. And also, they had women in their 90s that have still, you know, been on. So you're, you're never too young and you're never too old to participate and help out where you can with the auxiliary. They've done things like, you know, the raffles for, to win chamber bucks. You've seen them at the fair, you see them do the Valentines and sometimes Halloween bake sales, the, just a lot of different activities. And this past 2024, they raised just under $7,000 that they donated which went towards equipment for the shoulder replacement surgery that the hospital is now able to provide. And so I just heard a lot of information about that and also they provided some updates on their building and they had talked about the Wellness Center and the Wellness Center, you know, is going to be on the fourth floor of that new building. They showed some pictures and they showed the view that it's going to be. And I had told, told them at the spring banquet that I am definitely one that likes to attend their bake sales, but maybe with that view, I might venture to go to the Wellness Center, we'll see. But just it was a good banquet and I thought that the volunteers and the different people they have there were great and they've put a lot of years and a lot of effort into that. So that was a fun event. And then also just, you know, putting out there that there are a lot of different things people can get involved in and in the community and a lot of ways to give back and support. I heard that the Lions Club had a really good turnout for their pancake breakfast and they fund a lot of things in the community and help a lot of local people. And then, you know, we approved some of these Bingos for the chamber and for the women of today. You know, I know the Prairie Ecology Bus is, is doing Bingo tomorrow night. And so it's just fun things, people in the community, you know, there are fun things to do in our town and to get out and be involved in, but also a lot of these fun things to get involved in support things in our local community, people, organizations, those kind of things that give back to our community. So I just encourage people to get out and take advantage of that.
Scott?
I just want to say I respect everybody's decisions and everybody's input and all the decisions that we all have to make around in Wyndham City. And I just want to say that we all have a tough time deciding to or not to do certain things, but I just want to have everybody respect my decisions, Jenny's decisions, Dennis's and Sherm's and Jim's down there, because we all have a tough job down here. We all don't agree on everything all the time, but we do agree on, we all want Wyndham to be surviving and make it a great place to live. So just respect each and one of us, our own decision, our own thought process in this whole process. But I appreciate everybody just expecting that from us and we'll do the best job we can and I want to say thank you.
Steve, have you got anything for us?
Just, I'll say thank you to Tiffany for all her work for the community and wish her well and her future.
Good call. Tiffany slayed it during the flood and got an award for it, so she will be missed. The one thing I had was to remember that this Saturday from 8:00 to noon at the landfill is the Hazardous Waste Appliance and Electronics Collection Event. We're gearing up for our own citywide cleanup on May 17th and this is a half-price event at the landfill. There is an ad in the Citizen and the Shopper, but things like paints, chemicals, varnishes, car seats, Christmas lights, batteries are free. Half-price is appliance, TVs, monitors, printers, copiers, towers, VCRs, DVD players, fluorescent bulbs and ballast, mattresses and box springs. I think this is a really good way to inexpensively clean up any of the stuff that is laying around, so I know that I've got my own stuff too, I'm going to take it out and save some money on it. So 8:00 to noon this Saturday at the landfill. And that's all I have, we will adjourn this meeting by unanimous consent.